Y'all ready? Council, we'll go ahead and get started with this meeting. Tonight's meeting, we're gonna go ahead and have Dr. Darren McClellan from Fairfield Nine Methodist Church lead us with the invocation and the pledge. Dr. McClellan?
Let us pray. Grant us, Lord, we ask the Spirit to think and do always those things that are right, that are good, that are true, that are worthy of the gifts that you have given us. Lord, enable us to live according to your will. For Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. McClellan. Appreciate that. All right, council, I did have one item we discussed walking the trucks on tonight's agenda, and I know Marcus was working on a resolution for that, so if y'all were okay making a motion to amend the agenda to add that item, is item number 18?
I'll make a motion.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor of adding that item to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, that is now item number 18. Okay, so first item on the agenda, we'll go ahead and preview and approve the minutes of the July 25th council meeting and the July 25th work session.
Moved to approve the minutes in a minute.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Mayor is not here, but Councilman Burrell is going to act in her behalf and has a proclamation to read.
On behalf of the mayor and the city council, the city of Fairfield would like to recognize Mr. Joe Davis III. Joe, if I can ask you to come up to the podium, please. As many of you may have known, Commissioner Davis, his most recent title, he's been Councilman Davis and Chairman Davis and probably too many committees that I could even recite up here, but lately, he's served on the Eastern Shore Metropolitan Planning Organization with Mayor Sullivan and myself, and he's been dedicated to a lifetime of service, so the city of Fairfield would like to make a proclamation. And I'll read this, please. This is from the office of the mayor. Whereas Commissioner Joe Davis III has served the Eastern Shore first in his role as a councilman for the city of Daphne and currently as county commissioner, district two, for the Baldwin County Commission and on the Eastern Shore Metropolitan Planning Organization, and whereas Commissioner Joe Davis III has made positive contributions and has remained an advocate and supporter of many successful projects during his tenure in Baldwin County and along the Eastern Shore, and whereas the significant impacts that Commissioner Joe Davis III has made to the communities in which he has served are to be commended. And now therefore, I, Sherri Sullivan, mayor of the city of Fairfield, recognize and sincerely thank Commissioner Joe Davis III for his contributions to the Eastern Shore and Baldwin County through his work as a Baldwin County Commissioner, and do hereby proclaim August 8th, 2022, as Joe Davis III Day in the city of Fairfield.
All right.
I'm gonna let Commissioner Davis speak, but you know, I want to tell you, it's been a real pleasure serving with you. Commissioner Davis, he takes the job very seriously. He asks tough questions that the citizens demand he ask, and he's always done his best, and I just, it was a pleasure serving alongside him, sir. Thank you.
Jack, I appreciate that. Let me share with you, I'm Scott Tyrrich, which means I turn red when I'm getting mad, bad, glad, sad, or excited, so I should be turning red, but it's for being excited, I assure you of that. Jack, it's quite an honor and a surprise, folks, for you doing this. I appreciate it very much. It's been wonderful to work as a team. Y'all know how to do that, just we did. I was one of four commissioners. I thank the citizens for giving me the opportunity to serve in that capacity, and I want to recognize my wife, Norman. If you would, please stand. Let me tell you the story on purpose. We've been married 53 years, and she's the best thing that ever happened to me, and I've said it for 53 years. Anything I've accomplished in a variety of careers has been because she has instilled in me to do the right thing, the right way, from the right reason. Stay in bed.
Amen.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, sir.
Well, if you have a plate, I'll have it.
Photo op?
Yeah.
Put it for you.
Picture.
All of us. How are you doing? Y'all wanna come down? Let's all come down. Give us one second.
All right, Kim, get up.
Gotta get up.
I'm coming this way. All right, Kim. How about?
One, two, three. Yeah.
Appreciate you so much. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate you, sir. Commissioner, Mrs. Davis, I will say, and I've had the pleasure of certainly working with you at Daphne and your time on the county commission, I had a conversation this weekend with Ford Lewis and Gee Alford, and you talk about a small world. Ford said he was your next door neighbor up in Thomasville, and that Gee bought your house, and then the three of us were talking, and I said, well, we're gonna be recognizing him in two days for all his service at the county commission, so I thought, you know, it's always a small world, you never know who you run into, but they both had good things to say about you, even from back there. All right, at this time, we're gonna open the floor for public participation. This is for agenda items only, so if you're coming to speak to items six through 18, please step forward, address the council, give your name and address to the city clerk. Floor is open. All right, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the floor, and I will open the floor for council comments. Councilmember L?
Yes, during the break between the work session and the council meeting, I had read a text that I had received during the work session. If you see me on my phone, it's because I'm usually punching numbers or something in a calculator on it, not sending text messages, but I did want to, this has been brought up before, and I do want to make a mention that some residents in Fairfield are concerned with, you know, some flooding. They had, you know, even when they had an inch of rain, I got some videos that I received today showing potential issues. I don't want to call them issues until we know they're issues, but we need to, you know, look at that. I know that, I believe Eric's brought that up maybe, and I don't know if it's the same location, Richard, we need to make sure there's, you know, the same location, and also in the recreation board meeting last month, there was some talk about what to do. I may have mentioned this in my comments at the last meeting. There was some talk about, you know, what to do with the 40 acres that we have there that surrounds the Boy Scout Lodge, and there was at one time a lake that was proposed to be built there, and we had some people that were very opposed to it, very opinionated about it, and I think we received it pretty well, but a lot of citizens did not want that lake there, but I don't know if we need some regional water retention there. They make the claim that the water, they never flooded, you know, 10, 15, 20 years ago, and that something has changed in that area, so I would just ask, if the mayor was here, I'd ask the mayor to ask the staff to, please look into that and see if we can't get to the bottom of what may have changed, if anything there. Thank you.
Point of information, council chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I live across, it has changed. I don't know what has changed, but they're getting flooded, bad, when it's heavy rain, consistent heavy rain, so this came up after Sally. We kind of looked into it, I think Richard, mayor, it kind of came to our table, but I think we should dig further, for sure. We're gonna have to try to help those people.
All right, any other comments, Councilman Burrell?
That was it.
All right, Councilman Martin?
I have nothing.
Councilman Robinson?
Yeah, I just want to briefly mention that school starts back in Fairfield, and then I think it started back in a lot of areas in Mobile County today or yesterday, and then in Fairfield and Ballin County Wednesday, so just everybody say a prayer for our students, our administrators, our teachers, and just wish everybody a great school year, get back to it. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilman Bean?
No report.
All right, I just echo Councilman Robinson's comments. Everyone have a safe return to school, and everyone use your patience, the road's gonna be a little more crowded, so, thank you. First item on our agenda tonight is, we've got a public hearing for the renewal of MediaCom cable franchise, so bear with me, I do need to read this. My understanding is that the purpose of the public hearing in this meeting is to receive public comment regarding the performance of MediaCom, and for the council to learn more about the community's interest in cable television services. If there's any guests or representatives with MediaCom, I'd certainly point them out, but otherwise, go ahead and read the following paragraphs. This public hearing is being conducted pursuant to Cable Act of 1984, particularly section 626 of the Cable Act, which requires an opportunity for the public to comment about the cable franchise renewal. The ascertainment process that is laid out in the Cable Act includes really two major points to review. One is the past performance of the cable operator, the second is the future cable-related community needs of Fairfield City, city of Fairfield. In respect to the future cable-related needs of the community, they can include a whole host of issues. For example, one could be the possible upgrade of this cable system, and that includes everything from the channel capacity of the system to the quality of the reception you receive. Secondly, customer service, which could include how long you must wait on the telephone to talk with company representative to late fees. These are just examples of some of the issues that may arise during the franchise renewal process. Please do not limit yourself to these issues if there are others that concern you. Also, please understand if your comments are related to rates or programming preferences, these are areas the city has limited control of. Unless there are remarks from the city council, I would like to thank Mr. Mitchell Brown, Government Relations Manager for MediaCom, and representatives with MediaCom for making a presentation about MediaCom's plans in respect to the franchise renewal and their future plans to provide cable services in the city of Fairfield. Following MediaCom's comments, we would like to have citizens come up and comment about any issue important to them, so, I guess the floor is open.
Thank you, council. My name's Lee Beck, I'm the Mississippi-Alabama Area Director for MediaCom. It's pretty, it's laid out, it's a pretty standard franchise agreement. Is this a renewal? Mitchell is our Government Relations. I think the only changes were some increase in the franchise fees, and I think we've been working with your attorney, Mr. Gregg, but it's a pretty standard, straightforward franchise agreement that you've probably got in place with other telecommunications companies.
Okay. Thank you, sir, and council, any questions?
Yeah, I know that Mr. Fender had looked through the agreement, and I think there were just some very slight modifications. He was happy with everything, and I believe that the city and MediaCom, you know, agreed that, you know, it was just a little bit of back and forth and agreed to everything, but I would like to just, as just one of many representatives of the city, say thank y'all for being here and providing that service, and I hope that you get the access that you need for, you know, if you're expanding your services. We catch a lot of flack sometimes for somebody's, wherever that's cable, or whether it's their internet service is slow, or whatever, you know, we're not in that business. We don't, you know, we chose not to compete with private enterprise, but, you know, just anytime you guys can expand, I don't think we've ever denied any type of right-of-way agreement ever, and that's one thing I just take an opportunity to tell our citizens, we've never denied a right-of-way permit. Sometimes they're a little bit more difficult to get than others because...
Those people want to fuss about a pit, or how they look.
That's right. Sometimes things are a little bit more involved than others, but I hope that we can continue to have a good relationship with MediaCom. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you, and please allow me to say, Mr. John Thomas, in your permitting, I mean, we're on speed dial with each other. He calls up, there's an issue, we call him, and so he's been great to work with in getting the permits and everything, so the whole city, even the mayor, I've dealt with her on a couple escalated issues, and so everybody's been great to work with.
All right, thank you. Council, any other comments from y'all? All right, appreciate it. I guess at this time, we'll have the floor open, if anyone from the public would like to comment. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the floor. I appreciate y'all being here, thank you for that. Next item, item number six, is an ordinance, and is this to be introduced, or we introduced this last week, or last meeting, or what?
It needs to be introduced.
Okay, would someone like to introduce?
I'll introduce the ordinance, please.
All right, thank you, councilman. This ordinance is to discuss, a discussion to repeal and replace ordinance 1266, ordinance number 1296, and ordinance 1705. Fairfield Code of Ordinances, Article 6, the Garbage and Trash Collection and Disposal, Section 21-75. Richard, if you would, sir, has anyone, have we covered this enough in the work session? Y'all good?
Mm-hmm.
All right, it sounds like we've already covered it, sorry, sir, didn't mean to make it move, and just lay over till the next week, unless y'all have questions. All right, lay over. Item number seven is a resolution that the city of Fairfield has voted to procure litter booms and tactical cleanups for the Planning and Zoning Department from Osprey Initiative as sole source distributor, and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by Code of Alabama, annual cost not to exceed $27,000. And Don, if you don't mind, maybe you can answer some questions now. I'm sorry we had to cut earlier, but I appreciate you being here. So, would you like to just tell the council a little bit more about?
So excited to be here. I'm Don Bates, I own a little company called Osprey Initiative. We started in Mobile, and we live here in Fairfield, and it built our business around tactical attack of litter and the water, getting it out. And so the Wind Dixie Pond popped up, I've talked to Kim about it a good bit, what a good plan we think for that pond. We're just seeing this urban water. If it'll hold water, it's an asset, whether it's an ecosystem, it's still a pond, and so we think, and we started with the litter getter, now we make custom booms, we do a lot of different things, but the plan for that lake, that pond, is to do a tandem boom system. The first boom kind of knocks the energy down, and the second boom catches the litter, then we'll watch if there's any more litter coming in the lake from the subdivision behind it or different access points. We're kind of tactical in how we set our gear up. And then a part of that is getting in the lake, cleaning it up. No boom is perfect, a little gets away, so we come in twice a month minimum, and we'll be in the water, cleaning the pond out after rain events, and then we're kind of on call. For some reason, that weird rain happens, and there's a big escape of litter, gets in the pond, we get all that too. So the booms help, and then what's neat about it, what Kim's excited about, is we slow down a little bit. As we get our feet under us, get the gear working, if we need to host a science class or somebody to come out there and talk about stormwater, we'll coordinate one of our field trips, one of our visits with the students.
That's been great.
It's pretty neat, and then we'll collect, one of our pieces, we use an EPA protocol called ETAP, collect the data, and so we'll actually build a waste profile of what we're collecting in that pond, and so every time we clean up, you know, if we have certain brands that are coming in from upstream, then we may have a little issue closer to a gas station or something like that, so you're able to kind of build a little more focused upstream attack plans with that data. That comes with, it's kind of an a la carte, it comes with the service.
Okay, that sounds great. Council, any questions for Don, any comments?
Yeah, I got one real quick question. So if somebody needed to go and do maintenance on their retention pond, I actually thought it was a detention pond there, I don't know, I know that water sits in it now, but I thought it was designed to be detention, but anyway, be that as it may, if they have to go in, and I think it'd be the city, now the county, turn that over to the city, if we have to go in there and cut vegetation out of it or anything like that, is there a lot that we have to do to reboot?
We can do all of that, but we go soft infrastructure on our gear, so it's fence posts, we use natural trees, we protect them if we're using them, and we use carabiners. So really, we're on call, but you know, the city needs to go in there, call us, we're gonna move the boom, but they can also...
No big deal.
They can also clip it, it's a pretty simple process.
Yes, sir.
Councilor, point of information here. So, Don, how you doing today, first of all?
Good to see you.
Good to see you, buddy. Quick question. I know we were doing some reconnaissance, if I remember correctly, on where was the best place to place this, and I know, I'm kind of wondering what that looks like, are there any more areas that will need to catch trash that's going out to our bay that you saw when we did that recon or assessment of our different...
The beauty of Fairfield wetlands is, we're pretty good, you know, a lot of our litter's relatively recent, the easy litter on the roads, it seems like we get it up pretty quick, and I know that's a lot of folks working real hard behind the scene. We have a couple of drainages that we're interested in, I think as part of this project, we're gonna have a little time to do a little deeper dive. Yeah, I noticed the litter at the water treatment plant, you know, that pond right there catches a lot of litter, and I have ideas for maybe keeping the litter in that pond, and we could go get it, things like that, coming off the road. So I think this is a good starting project. We typically, you know, come October, we're not gonna get a lot of rain, we'll have the pond looking pretty good, and so we'll go find something else to do. We like to, you know, be a steward of the city's funds, so it's not gonna be, well, we got a lump sum, if we don't have to work this month, everything's great, that's not how we work. So, once we work through this, we'll work with Kim. A lot of our drainages are, there's a little bit of litter in them, but not a lot, and we think some tactical work, you just walk the drainage and get it. So I think this is an opportunity for us to kind of show our processes to the city, and if we like them, you know, the beauty, you know, again, we're very organized from a staff level, a lot of commitment to the beautiful, you know, how pretty our city is, so there's probably some things we can augment, and we can come in and hit some of those areas, but we'll help with that plan as we go.
One last thing, I think this is gonna be great for the kids, and what's the name of that little area?
Pelican's Nest?
Pelican's Nest. Casey, you know, I've been there many, many years with the kids, but they always talk about the plastics and the pellets that go into the estuary that kills the fish, but for them to actually see this process and something to mitigate those things happening to our bay, I think it's gonna be a great educational piece for what we're already doing, so God bless.
And part of our company is, we give back 5% of our gross, we match it in time talents and education, so that's how we budget our time to come back, and so we would actually have Kim set it up, and if that's where we need to come and do our talk, we actually bring the litter from that pond and let the kids lay it out and see their footprint, so it's an interactive part of that process.
That'd be great.
Thank y'all.
Councilman Bean or Robinson, any questions, comments? All right, I know you get paid to do this, but I also know you live here, and that this is a source of pride, so we appreciate you caring enough about Fairfield to bring this to us to begin with.
We're excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council, after hearing that, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number eight is a resolution that the city council approves SE Civil to perform professional engineering services for the water main upgrade from water treatment plant number three to category thirty-two for water and wastewater department with a negotiated fee not to exceed the amount of $18,000, and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a contract.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And second? Any further discussion, council? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number nine is a resolution that the city council approves amending bid number 34-21 for additional repairs that were unanticipated to the wastewater system, and materials need to be purchased for an additional cost of $158,250, which increases the total bid amount to $1,736,860, but as Andy stated, the actual total cost is ballpark around $1,005,000, so we went over that, I think, a decent amount in work session, but does anyone have any additional questions for Andy or for Jason on this item?
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number 10 is a resolution that the city council hereby approves the addition of the Nick Center Lot Repair and Paving to bid number 2122 with a bid price of $57,214.50, which is an increase of $15,964.50 to the previously approved budget. As Richard said, this is for safety of citizens and users of the facility. We can do it now, or we can do it later, costs might even go up more from there, so does anyone have any questions for Richard or Paige on this item?
I got one real quick question.
Yes, sir.
So is this gonna be pretty much, I mean, is it gonna look like a new parking lot when they finish, or?
Yes, sir, this is not just resurfacing, this is a repair. On all the areas where there's root uplift, they're gonna milled down, remove 12 inches, come back with rock, put binder, and then the whole parking lot will be overlaid, and there's a ton of striping, plus that includes all of the ADA handicap parking places being properly put back in per ADA.
Yeah, the pictures y'all are showing right now look pretty rough.
Yeah, I hate when someone fall.
Exactly.
It's, there's some tough navigation in there, yes, thank you.
Well, thank you for bringing that forward. All right, I think we got a motion and a second, and nope, no motion yet.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Second. They all said it, I just didn't want to be on the record.
All right, please put Mr. ...
I made the motion.
He made the motion.
Councilman Robinson on there for the third, second, please. All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number 11 is a resolution that the city council approves Christian Poyce Landscape Architecture to perform professional engineering services for Fairfield Clock Plaza for the Public Works Department with a negotiated fee not to exceed the amount of $18,799.14, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a contract. Any questions for Richard? I don't think we got specifically to talk about this during the work session, but...
This has long been anticipated. I'm making a motion, I'm excited to get this moving.
All right, we got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further comments or discussion?
But this is just for the engineering, correct?
Well, for the architecture plan.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir, the actual...
Yeah, okay, just clarify.
Yes, sir. All right, we got a motion and a second.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, real quick on the comments, that that, you know, that was one of the things that the mayor had brought before us on that list, for that money to be spent on.
That million dollars that we wanted to...
Yeah, that was to pay for the actual, build out, whatever that, whatever, you know, whatever that design looks like.
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah.
All right.
Vents, tables, whatever.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 12 is a resolution that the city council hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan on behalf of the city of Fairfield to execute a purchase agreement and all closing documents related to the sale of the two Quail Creek parcels and allocates funding out of municipal capital improvement fund, and folks, this is the, I guess, the resolution that authorizes the purchase of those two lots that we're buying from Quail Creek and the tennis court that we're gonna later come back and discuss converting to pickleball courts.
I moved it, for the mayor to execute purchase.
All right, got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I mean, did we, you know, it's a real estate transaction, I guess, so there's no price on here. Did we get it for the price that was discussed?
Yes, sir, we did. Oh, yes. We did.
I'm glad you asked.
I didn't want to write a blank check here.
No, 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 you're correct, thank you for pointing that out, and that's why it wasn't listed on there.
Right.
But yes, we got it for the correct price.
Okay.
All right, so we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number 13 is a resolution that the city of Fairfield has voted to purchase one John Deere 1550 Terrain Cut Commercial Front Mower and Rear Charge, Rear Discharge Deck or Equivalent for Public Works. Equipment is available for direct procurement through the Sourcewell Contract, has been nationally bid and therefore does not have to let out for bid, cost will not exceed $30,000. Richard went through a lot of horse trading conversation about this in the work session, I think he made a good case, all in an effort to save us $6,000, so that is appreciated, sir, and council, if you've got any further questions for Richard, now would be appropriate time to ask, if not?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All right. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to say not only saved us $6,000, but ensured that we would actually get some equipment.
We'd like to have motors to mow with, I mean, that's true.
Yeah. Garbage trucks to pick up garbage and all that stuff.
Aesthetics.
All right. Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. And thank you for saving money where you can, sir. Item number 14 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope has voted to procure municipal annual maintenance and licensing fees for the IT Department from Tyler Technologies as a sole source distributor and authorizes procurement. Based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama, the cost will not exceed $58,648.27. Jeff spoke to this earlier, just our annual license renewal.
So moved. Is under budget.
All right. Got a motion and a second for that item. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 15 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope adopts a resolution in support of Thomas Hospital's request to the Certificate of Need Review Board for 30 additional beds. Councilman Martin, did you want to weigh in on this medical background?
Yeah, so this came up with our recent history with COVID. And what happens in the hospitals, a lot of times, if a hospital reaches capacity consistently, I think the number's about six months consistently, where it has no reserves in all the beds or filled to capacity, then they have the right to either do 10% or a broader number, which is 30 beds for the number of beds that we have at Thomas Hospital. In this case, instead of doing the 10%, which would have been about 18 beds, they chose to do the 30 beds of capacity increase. So they really, at this point, do not have to go through all the rigmarole of a certificate of need. This is embedded in the rules and policies at the state and national level. So this is kind of something that kind of came in play after COVID. And the demographics, we're 68 people a day in Ballin County, growing, extrapolating. So, but another note is they are going to continue to look for a certificate of need. My question was why only 30, which I answered. But they will actually have to go through the process of a certificate of need to get more than 30 beds, and that's coming as well.
Okay. Well, I certainly think Thomas is a wonderful community partner and a big draw to people that consider retiring here or relocating here, knowing that we have excellent health care. Council, any additional comments or thoughts?
Yeah, I have a question. Is this going to be, are they going to make an addition to the hospital? And if so, will that be on the existing site?
Yeah, so all those questions are...
This is a precursor to that, and what are they going to do about parking?
Yeah. So all that's on the table, you know, nothing to really lay a hat on. But those are in conversation as they continue to look for a certificate of need to expand past these 30. But yes, they're looking for on campus, and that's in the talking with the guys over there.
I know they're just about to outgrow that space. I wondered if it did mean they were going to expand somewhere else in the area.
We'll see. But right now, they're thinking on campus. One of the options was to recreate the cardiac area and use that building where the cardiac is to expand the area and create another area for the cardiac. It's one of the conversations that I sourced. Yeah. Good question.
Council, any additional questions, comments? Would anyone like to make a motion on this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number 16 is a resolution that the Compensation and Job Classification Plan, along with the Grade Order Sheet, be amended and approved to add the job position of Benefits Coordinator Grade Eight to the city council approves a job description and pay for the same, and to fill with appropriate person within the pay grade. And this has gone through the Personnel Board, as Corey mentioned, and he does not have any other budgeted positions that he's planning on putting forward in the budget for HR for this year. Would anyone like to ask any additional questions to Corey about this before moving forward?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion, council? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number 17 is an appointment of Dan Hoover to the Rec Board. Councilman Burrell, Councilman Martin, I believe y'all are representatives.
Great addition.
All right. Okay. Anyone want to make a motion on?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Man, y'all were, y'all were so quick, I couldn't even get it out of my mouth. Pretty excited.
Hearing none. All those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 18 is, looking real quick, we have a rough resolution we could read for that?
We have a resolution. I'll read it, and I'll hand it to Lisa. Be resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope that the City Treasurer is authorized to issue purchase orders for eight Ford trucks listed on the attached spreadsheet totaling $307,637. Purchase orders will lock in vehicle orders and specific prices only. Said pricing and rates are off the Alabama State bid list, do not require separate bidding, and does not obligate the ultimate purchase of the vehicles. And I'll attach the spreadsheet with that.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
We've got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion or comments, council? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Next item up is public participation. We'll open the floor. For anything you wish to address before the council, and you've got up to three minutes, please give the clerk your name and address. Floor is open. All right. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the floor. Item number 19 is an executive session. I hereby request that the Fairhope City Council go into executive session based on Alabama Code to discuss pending litigation and possible settlement options regarding said pending litigation, to discuss security plans, procedures, assessments, measures, or systems, or the security or safety of persons, structures, facilities, or other infrastructures, the public disclosure of which could reasonably be expected to be detrimental to the public's safety or welfare. City Attorney hereby requests that the city council of the City of Fairhope rise from regular council meeting to go into executive session, and that we shall be in executive session for approximately 60 minutes. And at the end of the executive session, we'll return to city council chambers to resume regular meeting. Do you anticipate us taking any action, sir?
Yes, sir.
And we will have one item of action. Council, would anyone like to?
I'll move to go into executive session.
We got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll be back in 60 minutes. We got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes.